You good? All right, I'll call the meeting of the Oregon School District to order at 7:28 PM on September 28th at the Oregon High School Commons. Okay. Meetings called to order. Ms. Heights, would you call the roll?
Ms. Garissa?
Yes.
Mr. Mary? Ms. Flanagan? Mr. Pinker?
Here.
Here.
It's occurring remotely, and Mr. Mary has been excused. He's out of town on business. I approve that the meeting's been appropriately noticed pursuant to Wisconsin Open Meetings law. The agenda tonight contains consent calendar and information items, no action items tonight. I need a motion to approve the calendar or the agenda as posted.
I'm with approval of the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Garrison with the second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as posted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, he is coming from Montana. We've got that. And I should recognize that our student rep, Andrew Palmer, is here tonight. Good to see you live and in person.
Nice to see you too.
Okay. Takes us to item A of our consent calendar. Is there any item on the consent calendar that any board member wishes to have removed? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar.
So motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. The motion is to approve the items on the consent calendar. Would you call the roll?
Mr. Pinker?
Yes.
Ms. Garissa?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Obrant?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Consent items are approved. That takes us to the agenda information items. Number A is remarks from the president, and I have a few. Our refrain as a school board since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic has been three words: kindness, caring, and family. And our administrative team, our staff, our community, and our board have modeled that throughout the course of this. Those have been our, that's been our mantra. And that's been our mantra notwithstanding the, this country's model of dialogue, which leaves much to be desired. This past week, we've had a number of conversations and communications related to a number of issues in this district. One of the benefits of being a board member of 24, 22 years is a sense of perspective, and I'm going to pull rank at this time to provide you with mine. I don't think it should go unnoticed that we just concluded an annual meeting in which we adopted a budget in excess of, well, we reviewed a budget in excess of $60 million, and we approved a tax levy of $31 million. And there was not one question from our electorate about that. And I would suspect that none of the board members received any emails about that. And that's probably the way it should be because residents elect us and trust us to make wise decisions in who we hire to administer our funds and about us to oversee those funds and that process. I remember that the biggest group that I've ever experienced at a more board meeting occurred when Prairie View Elementary canceled its Halloween parade. At that time, we had 170 parents at that. One of the reasons that that celebration was canceled was because it was not an inclusive holiday for some of our students. And the hard message that we had to invoke at that time was that the Bill of Rights is not a majority rule concept and that the duty of the board and administration is to protect and to listen to those who are not heard or who are not in the majority. By stating these things, you know, of course, I recognize that there's a significant difference between tax dollars and the issues we're facing right now. It's in the middle of our five values. It's the whole child. We expect our parents to advocate for their children, and that comes with passion. But that doesn't mean we lose focus on how to communicate with each other. The first three weeks of a school year have always been, in my experience, really unsettling, even in normal times. It's the process of gradually moving into a return of learning. This year's brought us a really different perspective, though, hasn't it? We've got new and fantastic administration with Dr. Bergstrom, new curriculum directors, two new principals. Exciting times, but different. And that's in a, in a time when we're moving through a pandemic. It's also occurring, our first three weeks of schools also occurring in a country in which there's a heightened and sensitive focus on equity and inclusiveness and issues related to that, which increases the dialogue and rightly so. It's also taken place amongst a divisive national and state political atmosphere. And finally, it's taken place with COVID-19. You know, historically, this country hasn't seen this type of disruption, social disruption, since World War II. That means that we have two generations of people who have not had to deal with something that's not normal. The last pandemic of this sort was 100 years ago. We simply don't have rules in how to deal with this. So we're trying to gather facts and make the best decisions possible. And we as a society, that's all happening, is we as a society are struggling with how to live in a world that's not normal and adjust to it, and the future is uncertain. So the same trust and respect that district residents have with us in taxing and spending should still be there when we deal with them and their children because we recognize the passion and care that they bring to the table and bringing their students into our control and our care. Because we care for all 4,000 of those, that's the center of our values that Dr. Bergstrom showed. We care, and that's the message that we should be sending to all of our parents, that we care for each and every one of them. But we also care for the 600 employees that we have and their health and safety. And in particular, we care for our teachers who are working incredibly hard under very stressful times, both professionally and in their own personal lives. And so I'd like to thank all of our teachers for the incredible work that they're doing and persisting through this and the care and love, the care and love that they're showing to our students. And we also care for our community, and I think that this goes unrecognized at sometimes, that we also have an obligation to our community, and we have an obligation to their health and safety as well. And we care for our administrative team in particular, okay? I, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, I wish all of our community knew how hard they were working, you know, the number of hours that they're putting in, the number of times that Dr. Bergstrom has been on the phone with me and with others because there's been issues. Like, we talked yesterday, and I told Leslie I was hoping to make it through the weekend without talking to her, but the number of hours that simply our administrative team is putting in to work through this has just been incredible, and they're under a large amount of stress with this. And in particular, Dr. Bergstrom, you've been a role model for us all in your first three months as superintendent. Thank you. Last week, we had a lot of public discussion on a variety of subjects, and I'm not going to go into those in substance at all, okay? Because we've had substance conversations, and we'll continue to have meaningful substance communications. But I want to point out a couple of things. One with the school opening, that has parents and students on both sides of the issues. I mean, there's perspectives going every which way, and we've heard from all of them, and that's been subject to a lot of conversation. And you know what? That's terrific. Because you know what that means? It means people care. I would be worried in this district if we weren't getting that reaction from people, okay? The fact that so many people are communicating with us means that they care. It also means that they know we're listening. Because once they, once we stop listening, they stop talking and communication stops. And so I have a feeling that people know we're listening. It means that people understand that the model of operation in this district is one of continuous improvement. And if you go back and look at our board's position papers, continuous improvement has been a mantra of ours since the 1990s. That means that we analyze, we enact or adopt, we review, we continue to listen, we analyze again, we adopt, and it continues on in a cycle. Education is not static, it's dynamic, and that's been our model all along. And we hope that by people communicating with us, that they know we're listening and that we're assessing and that we're evaluating and changing as circumstances change, okay? And that's how we've addressed the COVID-19 issue. That's been our message all along. It's a dynamic process. It's not static. Where we are at now is not where we intend to be or hope to be. And as Dr. Bergstrom's slide showed at the very end, our goal is to get all of our students back into school at such point in time as it's safe to do so. So my request to people in this district is to remember the words that started out our process through this: be kind, be caring, let's act as a family, but also to give us some space. We've got an administrative team that's incredibly busy, that's dealing with just not only the normal operation of the school district, which takes up their full time in normal years, but with a lot of different issues, and respect their time and space. Continue to communicate, but understand and respect that, and trust us. You have a fantastic board, okay? You have an even better administrative team with this. I'm giving a speech later this week, and it's to school districts from across the state as part of my job. One of my slides is "One Night at Harvard." Everybody know what that's about? Don't spoil it for everybody. It's about Mark Zuckerberg, and it was the creation of the social media platforms that we experience today, not just Facebook, but other social media platforms. And those are two-edged shorts for districts. They are a rich source of information and communication and joy. It's where I get to show off my grandchildren and the joys of my life. It's a vast means of communication. But across the state, I can tell you, districts have found that they have at times turned to gossip pages where facts have become misstated, ignored, or misconstrued. And at that point in time, that transforms non-fact into fact, and that generates opinions based upon false bases. They also serve as platforms, in addition to places where we can brag about our grandchildren or what we had to eat or books that we've read, they can also be transformed into platforms where unkind acts and words are met with similar unkind acts and words. So districts ask me, how do we deal with these type of Facebook pages and these communications, which can be good, but which can do incredible harm to a district? There's not a lot we can do. People have First Amendment rights. We can try to encourage and lead. I ask districts to ask people in those groups, just to remind, hit the pause button before they post, and ask each person, before you post, when you look at this in three months or six months or one year, are you going to be proud of what you put down there? Is what you put down going to be borne out factually? In this district, I'd ask one more question. Do those quotes meet our standard of caring and kindness and family? Okay, now we go to information item B2, and we have Mr. King. You're here, that's all. I've got to figure out how we can get you boomed on. We got it? Josh, thanks. And I want to thank you, Josh, on behalf of your group. Josh had communicated with us that they wanted to make a presentation, so we facilitated the meeting, you know, after our annual meeting, so that you could do that, Josh. And I really appreciate the fact that you're going to be the spokesperson for the group, and we appreciate the fact that you had so many of your folks here letting us know in a kind and caring and compassionate way what your viewpoint is, that that's not going unnoticed. And please know we're listening.
Thank you.
Floor's yours.
Thank you. I appreciate the need for brevity tonight. I'll try to redirect it from something that I wrote and that's been shared. You each have a pack of information that should follow well as I go through. Thank you, Steve Zock, thank you to Dr. Bergstrom and the entire board. You know, I come from a family of educators. I'm from a town called Lake Charles, Louisiana. It's been in the news a little bit because it was at the center for a hurricane. I lived down there for most of my adult life before joining the Navy, and I can tell you, we've gone through a lot of really difficult times, and those people are really resilient and want to get back up. And I see the same kind of people here in Oregon and in the Wisconsin area, so that's why we're here. Dr. Bergstrom mentioned in a parting comment that I thought was very appropriate, and I can't agree with more. I'll paraphrase, "We're looking for new ways to improve," and I hope the words that are going to follow are taken in the same, exact same context as the group of people you mentioned outside, Steve, as everyone's here to want to participate in the education of the kids that we so dearly love. So thank you. What has no doubt been an unprecedented experience for children, educators, and academic leaders across the country in the past nine months. We want to acknowledge the initial fear and uncertainty that was laid before you in attempting to continue delivering a rich education for our children in a school district while maintaining a safe environment. We know that wasn't easy. What began in March with uncertainty of this new and novel virus was an appropriate reaction to maintaining the safety of our children, educators, and community by moving to an all-virtual learning system. Although not ideal, it was a necessary action to triage the situation and make sure we were allowed the time that was necessary to research and better characterize medically this virus's impact on society. Now, seven months later, we understand from many peer-reviewed journal publications that the coronavirus present in our state and our community unfortunately preferentially targets the elderly, those with comorbidities, compromised immune systems. And nobody challenges that this virus is dangerous to these populations. The protections for those at the highest risk are necessary to prevent the small but real morbidity and mortality the virus poses to these cohorts. What we also understand now in much greater detail is the mechanism of action behind the virus and why children of school age are largely spared from its effects. We are benefiting from a national and yet worldwide effort to characterize the virus thoroughly and have realized significant reduction in deaths and hospitalizations over the last month. It's with this knowledge that many schools have provided an in-person option for children who want or require face-to-face interaction in order to advance their academic, social, and mental development. Our group has performed weeks of research, and I speak of the group that was outside, helpful with many others I'll mention later, contacting school leaders, parents, and educators across the state and across the country to find out how many of them, how they must construct it, safe, teacher-supported processes to get back into the school. We were overwhelmed with the support from our fellow Americans. Mr. Zock made a comment earlier about the device of nature for our country. I can tell you, it's not all devices. There's a lot of people that want to see, and it's because we have a shared interest in our kids. They want to see everybody succeed at that level. So they participated in building plans for safer entry, face-to-face learning, and we share those with you, some of those tonight, we shared some via email earlier in the week. With the goal that we can learn from these efforts and lead the way and bring our kids back, precedent has been set, and we can now use their detailed examples to quickly and purposely lead the way in our county back towards normalcy for our children's sake. We must move on this immediately as the community is now recognizing the surprising regression of kids' attentiveness to their education and their inability to comprehend complex learning goals online. In part, this is due to the lack of one-on-one instruction in the familiar nurturing classroom environment, teachers can apply their skills to those they know that require it. Additionally, the use of smartphones through an online program distracts from educational experience. If you've ever been on a Zoom call with adults, you know the problem is real. I'm on them all the time, and I can tell you the problem. But it's clearly concerning with virtually supported learning and will manifest itself, potentially be a real problem when our, when our age-appropriate kids attend the mandatory person, in-person exams later this year, especially as matriculation into career, preparing higher learnings at stake. Maybe most alarming, however, is the backside meant to development that accompanies non-in-person learning for our junior high and younger students. In our town, we have parents reporting their children prone to arguments. The most recent Instagram incident is an example of this behavior. In fact, they're regressing to a point needing prime professional support. And the packet we leave you tonight will concede results of a non-scientific survey polling 126 families within Oregon, providing data highlighting their experience with virtual learning system. Without an option for face-to-face school here in Oregon, some parents have made the difficult decision to move their children out of the district or move out of the area altogether and think that's devastating for our community. We all feel that. However, the experiences across the country in bringing children and educational staff back in the classroom safely are available, and with a tailored blueprint for Oregon, we can do this together quickly and successfully. We are here for our children, we are here for our families, and we are absolutely here to support the Oregon School District leadership. Absolutely, without question. In closing, we, the community of Oregon, its parents, children, and business leaders hope to impart this to the board. The virtue of a system of educational partnerships, specifically the inclusion of a community as a fundamental contributor, is that no board member, superintendent, is expected to create, particularly in difficult times, a strategy in which the school leaders bear the sole burden of accountability, both in construction and execution of plans for a safe academic, social, and physical development within the confines of the school structure. We represent Oregon's most precious resource, our own children, and will defend their safety with our lives. And do not enter into any proposal for in-school education without deep thought and consideration of all the risks. This is why, in presence of overwhelming peer-reviewed data demonstrating the extremely low impact of COVID to our children, seek to establish a mutually beneficial partnership with the school board, develop and implement an in-person school option for the constituents of the town and village who require it in order to maintain their children's academic, social, and mental welfare, as each of these facets of development are shared in a social contract with educators in every city and every town across the country. We can develop, together in partnership, a safe methodology to bring our children back to school in Oregon in the very near future, and others have done so across the country, throughout our state even, and even down the road. Recently, we reached out to and had discussions with parents represented from schools in Verona, Belleville, Mountain Laura, The Forest, McFarland, Deerfield, Stoke, Sun Prairie, Wanakee, and Middleton, who share our same vision. What's exceptional is that Oregon is helping lead the effort to recognize these detrimental effects of no in-person schooling in our county and is championing the partnerships with our school board as we're doing tonight. In fact, we have invited parents to have some groups from those desiring in-person schooling to join tonight's meeting. Many, including teachers, are fearful to attend, be counted in person. We have to address that. They believe that we must ensure that these teachers that have struggled with virtual learning and desire the opportunity to get back in their classrooms and have a voice, plan to return their students and their college. We will make tonight's meeting video and notes available to them as they continue to support their locality, specifically the parents and children in Circly Dade County. We hope to use this opportunity to encourage the development of constructive parents Oregon School Board Group that communicates regularly, and will share a cumulative experience to implement an in-person option that meets the needs of our children and of teachers. Your participation is very welcome. It's welcomed with open arms by the large and growing community of parents, educators, business leaders, scientists, and physicians who want to help you achieve this goal. We look forward to initiating these meetings as early as this week, and I will provide my personal phone number via email to anybody on the board after tonight's meeting, facilitating any kind of kickoff that you'd like. Thank you again for your dedication, for providing the highest quality of education, and we look forward to engaging with you at the earliest opportunity. Sincerely, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Help us do this. We look very much forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, the district has received a significant number of emails on this and other subjects. Those, we're going to not read into the record, but make sure that all of you have copies of those as communications to the board. They're also going to be placed on the district website with a packet for the sport so that they'll can be contained as a record, as opposed to reading through all of those, okay? That takes us to information item B3. I guess I should ask, I don't see anybody else who was a...
Can I, from a student perspective?
Yeah, please.
All right, so the last time you guys asked me to talk, we were, what, four days into the school year, and I really couldn't tell how online school is going to go. But after three weeks, I can tell with certainty that it is not working for most students. Every single online class that I'm in, there are three or four students that are hopping in and out of class because their Wi-Fi keeps cutting out. It's not one of those things where a hotspot will help them because they live out in the country where there's no data. It's just something that's going to happen, and their learning is suffering because of where they live. Shoot, what's the word? So I'm drawing a blank. Let me, let me find it here real quick. Oh, involvement in online classes is at an all-time low. Students are even gaming in front of their cameras. Their teachers can see it, and all the teachers can do is just ask, or the kids will just turn off their cameras, and they'll still continue to play their games, they'll be on their phones, they aren't paying attention. The asynchronous classes, they'll just go to Google and look up the answers. There's no effort going in. Homework that's not turned in, students aren't doing it. Their learning is suffering because they have no motivation, there's no effort, there's no reason for them to do it. As far as socially, we all know what happened this week, and it's very unfortunate. And I personally believe that school district really values empathy. It's right on the wall over there. It's something that, as a high school, we have really focused on. I think the fact that we aren't seeing other people, we are losing basic human decency towards each other, we're losing empathy, we have no reason to act like human beings. There are students that are getting death threats, there are students that are getting told to kill themselves because they don't see these people anymore. They're, they have no consequences for what they say online. They're taking after adults who they're supposed to learn from their mistakes, they aren't supposed to follow their mistakes. I've talked to students in all grades, and it's really been a struggle. I know kids in third, third and fourth grade who initially were thinking they were going to be in-person one day a week, were planning, were talking to their teachers weeks before school. When the Dade County Public Health Madison Order came out, they were heartbroken. They couldn't be in-person, they couldn't see their friends and their cohorts, and now they're just left wondering, now that the injunctions happened, why aren't we in school? Especially because it was in the plan before. And they're saying, what the heck? We planned for this, we were set up for this, why isn't it happening? I know at the high school level, it's really been a struggle. There are kids who are doing school on Wednesdays, which is supposed, not a catch-up day, but it's supposed to be entirely asynchronous. There are kids who are waking up at 7:00 and working nonstop except for meals until 7:00 at night. That's not, that's more hours than their parents work, that's more hours than their teachers... That's more hours than their parents work. That's more hours than their teachers work. That's more hours than you guys most likely work on your individual jobs outside of that. I don't know. But that's just not something that's normal. I mean, we expect them, in a regular school setting, to do work for eight hours and to have a few hours of homework after. But 12 hours is just too much to ask for a freshman. I was speaking with, I'm a Pride Crew member, so I was speaking with the connections today, and that was overwhelmingly the sentiment that I got. Then there are other days when they'll only have like two hours of work. So it's just, there's a huge imbalance. It really changes with the classes, and it almost seems as though the teachers do not recognize that there are other classes that they, or that students have. I know, especially with AP classes, which are skinnies, as we like to call them, they're teaching it as though it's a block. They're giving homework as though the students only have a few other classes. I myself am in five AP classes. Each one is giving me homework as though it would be two or three days of schoolwork each day. And finally, the sentiment that I hear is, put us in school, we'll do anything. I've heard kids tell me that they'll wear hazmat suits to school if they can be in-person. I know you guys are giving a lot of effort, but at least at the student level, it's really not coming out that way. You know, seniors are wondering how their online classes are going to translate into their dream school, whether it will affect them, whether they'll have to take calculus again at the college level. Juniors are wondering if their ACT scores are going to be as good as they were if they got a whole year of in-person learning. Sophomores are wondering whether their social learning is going to grow in the same way that it would in-person, and whether they'll ever catch up throughout their life. And freshmen, as one kid in my connections told me today, he said, "I just want to quit." Freshmen, they're the ones who get the worst of this. I mean, they really get hurt by this because they don't understand, or they don't get to understand true way high school is. They don't get to learn the social norms that come from being a freshman in high school and potentially a sophomore. I mean, it affects the current sophomores as well. And they just don't really see an out. It's caused really high depression rates. I know suicidal thoughts are up in students, and there's not much that help can do. I mean, for a lot of these kids, they see the only way that they can get true help is to just be with their friends anymore. And they just don't really see the effort that's going in, and they just want to know that the school board is fighting for their right to choose where to be. Lastly, I'd like to leave you with the thought that personally, I believe that there are ways that this can be done safely in-person. We all have heard about the schools. I believe Belleville's one of them that is looking at closing. The ones where it's not worked. And to that I say, it's an old adage in news, comes from Mark Twain. It's news when man bites dog, but it's not news when dog bites man. You know, when schools work as they're supposed to, that's normal. That's not newsworthy. But when schools are shutting down, that's newsworthy. If we look across the whole state, especially look at Oconomawalk, a school that's about the same size as our district, a county that has, while has fewer COVID numbers, has double Dane County's death rate. Oconomawalk is in-person, and actually, their high school is, I think, a thousand more students than Oregon's. They have had one teacher across the entire school district who has had COVID, and I believe 13 students who have had COVID. And through contact tracing, they haven't been able to determine if any students have gotten it from being in school, and they know for a fact that that one teacher did not get it from a student. So I'd just like to say, I'm looking forward to seeing the effort, and I think it can be done safely. And I know a lot of the kids that are in high school, middle school, even elementary school are looking forward to being in-person and are waiting with open ears and open eyes.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for your perspective. Appreciate it. All right. Anybody else? That takes us to B3, school opening update.
All right. Thank you.
That's the deal, Chris. Is there a way to get us to like online community better?
Sure.
You know, if that's a deal.
Thank you. As I discuss our plan tonight for how we're moving forward, I want to once again ground ourselves in our principles, the guiding principles that we remain really consistent with throughout this process. You've already seen components each one of these in previous slides, which you would hear from the state of the district. But at the center of our guiding principles related to the reopening process is really the idea of equity and the whole child emphasis, and having an inclusive environment for our kids. And of course, health and safety, of course, that's a top priority, our commitments that has not changed. And you see how we started off this year with a focus on the mental health and social learning also, because that is the foundation for any of the education that students are receiving. And then finally, flexibility and adaptability, because we've also seen how fast things change. And so we have to be ready to pivot with our plan at sometimes what seems like a moment's notice. So if you would mind, there you go. The next one if you would. Thank you. Now, I know that many people are asking some really excellent questions related to plans, opening plans that people have around the state, whether they're a hybrid option or a full in-person option. And we certainly have a lot to learn, and I'll talk a little bit further on related to how we're going about doing that. But one of the things that's often very different is that there are very often public health departments within the counties where these schools are that aren't offering guidance or they're not offering school reopening metrics that are very specific, as opposed to Dane County, which has, they've developed very specific metrics. And whether or not, whatever the decision this committee makes, public health will still say, "Involve and underline. We're asking you to please follow our guidance related to grades three through 12 being virtual." So that's a pretty significant difference between the schools in Dane County and the schools in other counties around the state, is that we're being given very specific guidance from public health, which are the professionals that are paid by the taxpayers to assess the situation and give that guidance. So that's one of the things that makes us a little different. Another thing that I wanted to point out is that when I have questions, I reach out. So not only do I reach out to public health, but I reach out to some of our more trusted experts in the area. And I'm really grateful to Dr. Temptin. He's always willing to give me a moment of his time, and I'm very appreciative of that. Dr. Temptin is an associate dean of public health and community engagement at the University School of Medicine and Public Health. And a lot of you probably know him as the doctor who is in the Orchard Study. The Orchard Study has been a part of our school district for a very long time, and it has to do with involving cold and flu monitoring students in grades K-12. So a lot of the questions that I get are challenging for me to answer as someone who is not a public health expert or epidemiologist. So that's when I go to the experts. And so one of the things that people are asking a lot about, and that is the comparison between COVID or the virus that causes COVID, SARS-CoV-2, and influenza, and how the two of them compare. And so that is a very common question. I think it came up in several emails, so that's why I reached out to Temptin and asked him a little bit about it. And graciously, he gave me some data and referenced some articles he wrote. He said, "Overall, the seasonal flu compared to COVID, COVID is about 40 times more deadly to ascotinides than the seasonal flu." However, this is a really big however, there isn't a lot of data related to morbidity in children and COVID. And part of that has to do with the fact that schools close. So that's one of the things that he cautioned me about, is the nuance of data, and how important it is to be very thorough in the examination of data and all the nuances around it. Because the data at the surface might seem as though flu is more dangerous for our students than COVID, is that it's because we don't have a full set of factual data related to the impact of students or young people in COVID. We also know we have a lot of information, or we don't have a lot of information about the long-term impact. He said his best guess right now, and I'm sure as a scientist using the word guess is extremely difficult to even do, but the best guess is that it's COVID is a per SARS-CoV-2. It's about 20 times more lethal to young people than the flu. However, this is a big however, he said that healthy children, for the most part, do well. Now, whenever we're talking about children and their health, for the most part, probably isn't very comforting to people who are at home listening. But for the most part, healthy children do well. However, they are, and these are his words, "They are quite able to transmit this virus effectively and efficiently." So that's an important thing for us to remember, is that we need to think about our children, number one, but we also need to think about all of the people who are in contact with our children. And we know our kids are much more than virus transmitters, and I would never want to bring them down to that level. They are important people. They're the reason we exist. But we also know, based on what I have been told from others, including Dr. Temptin, is that they are able, particularly our older students, are able to transmit the virus as efficiently as an adult. And that means that there's a lot of people who come into contact with students who are sick. So while at some schools it may only be 13, we really don't know, 13, by the way, still seems like a lot, we really don't know how many people those 13 may be impacting. So that's just a little note from Dr. Temptin. I have no way to pretend to be a data expert, but I wanted everyone to understand that, yes, we're monitoring public health, but we're also reaching out to other professionals because we want to have a better understanding, as Dr. Temptin said, of the nuance of the data. So, the next one. The fall plan, of course, you know we have a two-phased approach. We have the Oregon phased restart, and we have the Oregon online. And we have a good number of people in both. And I'd say, what is it, about 25% of our students are in the Oregon online and about 75% in Oregon phased restart. So I want to talk just a moment about Oregon online because we have so many students who are part of that program. And of course, once again, just like every other instructional component of our program, we want to build strong relationships. We're consistently improving the process. We get a lot of feedback about time related to the amount of synchronous learning versus asynchronous. And about half the feedback is, it's too much time, and about half the feedback is, it's not enough time. So we know that it's challenging to find the right amount because we know we're dealing with hundreds of children with very different educational needs. And so learning how to differentiate appropriately in this particular environment, I think, is part of our learning process, too. And we know that we're building the student stamina for online learning, but we're also extremely mindful of the fact that none of us want our kids in front of screens for hours upon hours. And so we really are working to try to find that, I would say, the sweet spot, and what's going to be conducive to student learning, but also not completely shut people down. And I think that Andrew tonight illustrated definitely some of the issues that are related to students shutting down when it becomes too much, and sometimes shutting down when it's not enough. So if we go to the next one, phased restart for 4K through grade two. Our original plan was to make sure our K2s were phased into school, and that's exactly how it has happened. Our 4K cohorts receive their cohort assignments AM or PM on 9/18, our K2s on 9/24. Ball routes are currently in process, and they will be receiving information about that probably by Wednesday. And then we're working to ensure that our health and safety procedures for being able to bring our students into school for AM and PM cohorts, that our health and safety procedures are top-notch, the highest possible quality. And so that is requiring a lot of planning, but that's not an insurmountable piece. And I know that our parents, many of them are feeling very concerned about sending their K2s to school when the numbers in the area, or the numbers in Wisconsin in general, continue to decline. However, I have said to the parents who are concerned and expressed that concern that public health is continuing to allow K2 in-person schooling, and that if we're following public health, then we really should move and ensure that we're getting our youngest ones as much school as we can safely give them, as much in-person school as we can safely give them. And we chose AM/PM because we really felt that teachers seeing students more often was the best thing we could do for their learning, given the fact that we were able to bring them in. So that is one of the reasons. The other reason is, I think it's probably very challenging for students to wear their mask for eight hours when they're five or six years old. And so a shorter period of time to allow them to really adhere to those rules related to masks, it's most likely if they're given a shorter period of time in which they're asked to adhere to that. So we'll be sending something out to our K2 parents this week, giving them some illustrations of the safety measures so they know what the classroom will look like, and they know how kids will get from the bus to their classroom, and all of the things that I know are really on their mind right now. And then for phased restart, grades three through five, they will have the same schedule as the K2s. They'll also be in AM and PM cohorts. We'll do sibling alignment because we know that most families, not all, we definitely learned that it's not everyone, but most families prefer to have their children in the same time period. And similar to the other grades, will be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And I'll talk a little bit about Wednesdays in just a moment. And then we will be applying, of course, the same safety procedures. And we're really hoping that the target date for grades three through five is very soon because, similar to what Andrew said, we know our students in grades three and four were looking forward to this and planning for it. And it was probably a huge disappointment when they found out that it couldn't be a part of how they started their school year. Then we'll move to phased restart for grades three through six through 12. So we're definitely engaging in our due diligence to explore all the in-person possibilities. We have already visited another school district, and Mr. Planner is set for another one yet this week. And we have several other contacts that we're engaging with to gain information on what's happening and what model they're using and the advantages they see to each. It's really about how are we going to approach a blended? Because there will be many families who will choose Oregon online for a period of time in addition to the ones who want to be in-person. So how would the blended option work? Would it be flipped instruction where we're taping what we do with the in-person students and the students who are at home are watching it? Or will it be simultaneous? And there are several models that are used related to that. But the simultaneous basically is, the teacher has students in front of them, and they have students on the screen over here, and they're trying to teach to both groups at the same time. So there are definitely challenges related to the hybrid model for grades six through 12, but we're trying to learn as much as we can from the people who've already implemented it so that when we're to that point, we can be ready to go and we can offer the highest quality experience possible. So the leadership teams are discussing the possibilities at the school. And of course, we already have our health and safety practices. We would know how we had to structure the school and how we had to help students remember some of the important safety procedures. So then I'll go to the more intermediate steps. While we are waiting, and I hope the wait is a short one, but we'll have in-person supports for students who want additional, or students whose families, families want, or students want, additional mental health supports in addition to the virtual ones. So we're working on creating protocols for students to come in and receive supports in that way. Perhaps individual, perhaps small group. It really will depend on the student's need. Students who have IEPs. Right now, IEP teams are meeting at parent requests. It started with students who were really struggling in the spring. We knew who they were, and so those IEP teams met to craft plans for in-person instruction. And the next group will be the students who are students with IEPs who are perhaps struggling now. And there will be IEP teams gathered to make decisions related to in-person instruction for them. We're also looking into the protocols for creating study areas in our cafeterias. So students who have internet problems, similar to what was described earlier, would be able to be in the cafeteria accessing our internet at safe intervals at whatever capacity is deemed appropriate as we begin to explore it. And so I think that has a lot of potential. And so, I think that has a lot of potential for giving students an opportunity to be out of their home, accessing consistent internet, and perhaps having a quiet place to study. Because we know when multiple siblings are at home, all trying to do this work at the same time, it's probably difficult to have a quiet place. So, those are intermediate steps that will help us move students into the building in a manner that is safe before we begin to offer instruction in a face-to-face manner. Just want to mention a little bit about our staff. I know they were thanked by President Zoc earlier, and I mentioned them in our state of the school district, but I also want to mention them once again. Our focus is always on the student experience. It's about the students. That's the, they're the focus of what we do. But it's really important to understand, I think, what goes on behind the scenes to create that student experience. You can see multiple pictures here of teachers engaging in online learning, face-to-face learning, and the many, many meetings they're attending. So, the student's schedule for online learning is always a significant point of discussion. It's a five-day-a-week schedule. It's just that Wednesdays are often either asynchronous lessons or homework that is assigned particularly for completion on that day. Or it's also allowing students an opportunity to perhaps do more work on Tuesdays so they have more time free on Wednesday. It's allowing them an opportunity to maybe flex some of their hours. So, in order to prepare the student lessons, whether they're synchronous or asynchronous, or whether it's a homework assignment, the teacher day is extraordinarily full, and it starts well before they're engaging with students online, and it ends far after. We know how critical feedback is to student growth. Consequently, the giving of feedback, whether it's in individual conferences, small group conferences, or written feedback, that's taking a considerable amount of time, too. So oftentimes, I think people are considering the only part of the day where the teacher is doing something is when they're in front of the students. But I think it's really important that everybody understands all the back work that goes into that piece. It's not just when you're in your student, when you're teaching your class of 25, but it's also when you're meeting with the small groups and meeting with the individuals, and you're trying to give people feedback on the work that's coming in. Because feedback is the engine for growth, whether we're in person or we're virtual. And also, we have placed in a significantly high value, as a district, whether we're in this situation or in other years, on collaboration. The idea that we're better together, that our instruction will be better if we're collaborating with one another. And so, on those Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Fridays, teachers are pretty much with students. And that's why the Wednesdays have become very important. So they're able to meet together in groups, whether it's professional learning communities, examining assessments, and discussing feedback protocols, or whether it's in team meetings to discuss student product, or student progress, and the supports that they need to put in place for individual students. All of those things are happening in addition to cross-grade and cross-building, I'm sorry, subject meetings. So for instance, Wednesdays is the day where, let's say, all fourth-grade math representatives meet to talk about the essential learning targets for fourth-grade math. What will the lessons be? What will the assessments be? Will they bring the assessments back together next time and discuss the results? All of those pieces that are really critical to ensuring that there's some level of consistency across the district related to the student experience. And then, finally, I would say this slide is very similar to what President Zoc spoke about in his comments at the beginning, is that we plan, we try, we check the results, we make adjustments, and it's happening consistently over and over. And we really appreciate the patience that people have shown us, and as we're trying to get the timing just right, just long enough to keep their attention, but not so long that they're wishing it was over. And finding that little, that spot in between is challenging. And I think teachers are getting closer and closer to finding it. That's just one example of the plan and the check, and the do and the act. So, that is it for now, and I definitely have heard what our parents tonight have said to us through the presentation by Mr. King, and certainly have listened to what Andrew said. I think his firsthand experiences are vital to ensuring we're keeping a real perspective on the situation.
Thank you, Leslie. I'll quickly go through to the board members and see if there are any questions of Dr. Burks from, Tim, still with us? If you're there.
Yes, I am still here.
Do you have any questions for Leslie?
I don't have any questions. Leslie, thank you so much for your level-headed response. I know it has been one thing after another for months for you. I can't imagine being in your position, and so I do really appreciate the moving target that we've had. I appreciate your level-headed response to lots of emails coming in from board members, from community members. And so, you, I appreciate you steadying the ship. I know it's a wait-and-see. It feels like it's been, it has been a wait-and-see for months. I know you're reaching out, and administrators are reaching out to districts across the county and even across the state to better understand what options we have. I understand it's evolving. I do. And I don't pretend to know more than anybody else about this. And certainly, the input, you're gathering input from far more sources than I am at the moment, far and wide. So, thank you again for your level-headed response to the situation we're in. That's it for me.
Thanks, Tim. Tim, is the bear gone?
Sorry?
Is the bear gone?
No bears at the moment. All is well.
Well, he called me earlier. He put the bear on there. Anna, anything for you?
Just a quick question. With the AM/PM cohort that's expected October 5th?
Yes.
So will that be the same timing of the 7:50 to 10:30 AM, and then 12:10 to 2:50 PM? And then, will that also, they have a virtual component, or is that going to just be what they have Monday through Friday?
Well, thank you for asking. There will be the rotations, so the general music, art, PE, love language, those will be offered opposite than when students are in person. In addition to potentially additional supplemental asynchronous instruction that's related to what they're getting in their in-person time.
Thank you. That's the only question I have.
Also, with the other, everything?
All right. So just to clarify, and then onward from three through five, the live learning would also go for grades three through five, when, if and when the time comes that they're going...
So, when they're actually in person AM/PM, will they also have live instruction?
Would that also?
Absolutely, but it would probably be through their rotation teachers?
Because they're their teachers today.
Yep. Just clarifying so everybody understands what happens if and when the time comes for them to go back to school. I don't have any questions at this time.
Right.
My first question, Leslie, is you mentioned the potential of bringing some students in to use a common areas for those students who are challenged with internet connectivity.
Yes.
How would that play into or adhere to Dade County Health Guidance if we're talking above third grade level?
Right. Well, we are not, they're asking us to not do virtual, or not do in-person instruction, which means they're not asking us to fill, they're asking us to not fill up our classrooms, right? But if we were to be able to use a common area and stay within their guidelines for how many people could be in that space, and the students were adhering to that I'm sitting here, and the next person is six or more feet away from me, and we could adhere to that, I think we'd be able to do that safely as long as we kept the numbers at a limited amount.
Okay. Thank you. And then, my next question is about the Dade County Health Guidance. And I know that you're continually in contact and meeting with that group. And, you know, we know that there's new evidence published every day. I think there's been some really good articles that have been shared from the parent group. And some of this data, these articles are published, you know, within the last week. I know that one that was published on the 21st. And, you know, we're learning so much so quickly. So my, I guess my question is, and you maybe can't answer this, but do you have a feel for that Dade County Guidance? Is that static? Are they continually reviewing the data that comes in? Is that shared with the school districts? Do you have anything to share with us on...
Possibility that their advice could change.
That it was going to change. Because we know that the metrics that they've provided, at least with the current trends, it's not, we're not moving in the right direction.
Well, they're a science-driven organization, so if the science leads them to believe that we don't need to meet the metrics that they thought we needed to meet when they first weighed them in August, I have faith that they would make that change. I know that they look at multiple pieces and not just one forward-facing metric. They use multiple points of data to inform their thinking. And we've had really excellent discussions about that because the question is definitely open for K2. You know, if the metric was 54 cases on a 14-day average, why in the world are we allowed to bring kids in when it's 176? And so, what they said, and I think it makes a lot of sense, and I think it really gets to your question, too, is it's not just the average, but it's all the other pieces related to, can they trace back where people were infected? And was it a cluster that's controllable as opposed to a spread where people don't know where it came from? And I think that metric actually just went from red to yellow. The percentage of people who have no idea where they got it has decreased, and I think that's one of those additional metrics that they're using to inform their decision-making. If they can trace things back, that's a lot different than people having no idea where they got it. So yes, I do believe that they're open to changing those metrics based on increasing scientific knowledge as well as the examination of multiple factors and not just that one really public-facing 14-day-average number.
Good. Crystal?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, I really appreciate Steve, you commenting, and you, Leslie, as well, that the decision-making that we look at, while children are the focus of that, there's certainly more factors associated with how we make decisions, and that really implements, or that really impacts our risk tolerance. So, while it's very, very important that parents are focused on what is best for their child, we've got to focus on 4,000 students, 600 adults, in our role in the larger community. So that already kind of puts us in a different sphere of decision-making. So I guess, after that point is, can you talk about, you kind of presented all the things that we're looking at for a 6-12 plan? Can you give us, and I know there's a lot of moving parts, and you're really looking at other districts, what is your timeline for when that plan would be somewhat set that we can start communicating with families potentially what this looks like?
I would probably invite Mr. Planer if he'd like to give any input on this, too, because we are definitely in the exploration phase, but we are visiting several places, and I think we'll be able to have an idea about what it will look like when we can bring them in pretty soon. So if you don't mind, Mr. Planer, I know that you and your leadership team have been talking about this quite a bit, and consequently, I wanted to make sure that your voice was heard in the discussion.
All right. We have, we had constructed kind of a plan for return for a hybrid model, which is, of course, the most complex. All in person, we know how to do that and done that. And so, we have, we have committed ourselves to be teaching to our member of classrooms throughout the year, knowing that we have multiple cohorts of kids, including some who will choose to not return. Now, what's really, I guess, opportunistic for us at this moment is to visit other districts to see how they tweak that hybrid model, and then to really anticipate the workflow for teachers in order for this to happen. It doesn't matter what model we're in, if we cannot construct coherent educational experiences for our kids, we're going to struggle. And we need also to have a workflow that is manageable, that is predictable, and that is keeps the bar and the ceiling high for learning experiences. So, we are going to take every opportunity we can to, while we're waiting a little bit for the metrics to come down, we've got the elements of a plan produced, but a lot of key details that come right down to, as Leslie had said, are we leaning toward a model that we saw in the district to the south and east of us where they have live feeds that are going, in which case, if we lean that way, there's some logistical purchases and things that need to be implemented, and workflows that need to be put in place. If we are going to lean more toward a model where we have a flipped instructional priority, then there's PD associated with getting teachers ready for that. In addition to just a few other topics that we're looking at, because it would be super helpful if we were to know exactly how many folks are going to opt for an online setting. We know that's a little fluid, because that could influence some of our decisions about how we manage it, say, if we get into second semester. So there's a lot of moving parts. We're giving it a lot of significant reflection. It's almost an obsession. Because we want to be here, and we know that this is better in the long run, but we also know that we have a commitment to students, staff, and our community at large to being safe and to doing it in all the right way. So, as soon as time happens, we'll be ready. I'm here if you have an other question.
So I guess my follow-up question is, given that we know that we need to communicate with families so they can start preparing for whatever that is going to be, and so, what is the plan in terms of making a decision and communicating with parents? I just think people, you know, that's some of the things that I hear is that it's nice to have hope and to have knowledge. And so, at what point do we continue to communicate and give people the information that you just shared tonight, or so 6-12 really has a sense of, we're working on their behalf, we've got plans in place, and we're going to take you along in this journey with us in terms of what that looks like and when?
So, I'm very sure, you know, and again, I'm eager to visit the district to the north and west of us this week, and potentially another district the following week. And every time we get these experiences, it helps us refine our vision.
Great, thank you. Just a couple other questions, based on some of the things that we've heard tonight and things that we know that are out there. We know that students are struggling, right? We know that that is somewhat of a decision which we make by being virtual, that we know some more students are going to struggle. So you can, can you talk a little bit about, you talked about food tonight, but if parents are having children that are really struggling with mental health, how can the school district help them?
Thank you for bringing that up, because what I would suggest, and we'll be doing another check-in as we did after the first couple of weeks of school, we'll be doing another check-in of that nature, so that people are continuously offered opportunities to say, yes, give me a call, I want to talk about this, or please contact my child, they want to talk to you about this. So that will be something that's happening regularly, and in between that, I would definitely say that we want people to reach out to their student services staff at their school. And all of that's on the website, but even if you say, I don't even want to go on the website, that's no problem. Reach out to the teacher. The teacher can connect you to whomever could offer the support. If you want to call the principal directly, the principal can connect you with whomever could offer the support. It really, really is just a phone call away, in addition to the fact that teachers are monitoring students as they see them, and they're bringing concerns that are becoming apparent to student services right away. So we have processes built in within our system so that lack of engagement or other issues that are making teachers concerned, that referral goes straight to student services. But parents can take the matters in their own hand at any point and reach out to any of the adults in the school, and they would have access to services that way, too.
And same thing, so if, same what we're doing with mental health, so if students are having technical... are having technical issues, teachers are knowing about that. And they're, tell us what are the resources available there?
Yeah, they are. And we have a tech, a tech helpline. And I know that people have been able to receive help through the tech helpline. But I also know, as Andrew pointed out, there are portions of our school district where internet is challenging. And that's one of the reasons that we supply the hotspots to some of our families, but even then, it can be challenging. And consequently, that's one of the reasons we want to look for ways to better utilize the internet systems within our building, buildings, multiple, as long as we're complying with the public health guidelines and keeping our kids safe and doing so.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Great. Andrew gave us some good anecdotal information. I thank you for that.
I have more if you want more.
We'll let you talk to Dr. Burks, it's getting late.
Perfect.
But it's good. Because that's the information that we need to know. And, and nobody thinks this is the ideal mode of instruction, but it does provide us with an opportunity to learn what works and doesn't work in it. And so I think the question is, we're getting anecdotal stuff from parents and students and that, are we going to do a more systemic approach? You know, at some point, to saying like, what's your experience been? What's working? What's not working? That sort of stuff. So we get, you know, anecdotal's helpful, but a broader-based survey is even more helpful.
Absolutely. That'll either happen this week or early next week. We're working on the survey now.
Great, thanks. That's the only question I had. And Andrew, if you, you've got my number and stuff at Dr. Burks', if you want to share, and Chloe, too?
Yes, sir.
That's why you're on, you're board rep, so we need to hear that information from you.
All right.
Okay, good. I think that concludes your presentation. We've just got a German, one thing that's not on the agenda is visioning. Do you want to talk a little bit about this real quick?
Yeah, we had, we had talked several months ago about a common read. And we, we had selected a book, the name is escaping.
The White Racial Frame.
White Racial Frame is a book that many people in Dane County are reading. So we, we had that as our first book, and Leslie has suggested a second read, the cast book. And so as a board, we're going to, we're going to read this as well, and we'll have a book discussion at some point here in the future, as we can fit it into what we use.
It's just getting tremendous reviews from people who've read it. I mean, I actually have, next time, I'll accuse a warmth of other sons that, that this little person has written.
I read that one, too. It's great.
It's supposedly great, but I'm looking forward to reading this. So, thanks. So board members, dig in. Good, we have one more motion to entertain at this point. This would be adjourned.
Come on, somebody else.
Tim, did you move to adjourn?
Yes, I did.
We need a second.
A second.
Fall favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, it's 8:41, we're adjourned. Be safe, Tim. See you when you're...